Byron Independent School District Number 531 on March 24th at 6 o'clock. Have our attendants?
Yep, Jeremy.
Here.
Alicia.
Here.
Nadia.
Here.
David.
Here.
Kelly.
Here.
If you'll rise and face the flag for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Vision is Byron Public Schools, a community of learners committed to making the world a better place. Mission is to learn, share, innovate, inspire, and our priorities are to personalize learning in the pursuit of academic excellence. Inspire students and staff to develop their character, share their talents, and apply their learning, and maintain excellence in resource management. I did not receive any visitor cards. Did anyone else? Okay. All right. Look for action or discussion, approval of agenda items. Any questions or discussion?
Move to approve the agenda as presented.
Okay. Motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. We'll dive into our reports with the superintendent report.
Yes, so for this past month, schools are moving into fourth quarter. Today was the staff development day, and so now it's fourth quarter, and it goes really fast with all the testing and everything that has, it happens in the fourth quarter. It goes fast, and then all of a sudden, before you know it, graduation happens, and all the picnics and all the fun stuff happens. So I wanted to say thank you again to all the, all the staff for all the great work for the first three quarters, and remember that we will have spring concerts happening as well as sports and graduation on May 23rd. I also want you to know that in the last couple of weeks that we have completed information for the MDE Office of Inspector General. We had a request. They wanted to look at our Fund II food service. By looking at our audit, they saw a substantial increase of $92,000. And remember, we have Fund I, which is our general fund, Fund II, which is food service. And they, they just noticed that because we had a $2 million decrease, they wanted to know why our fund service, fund food service went. And we, you know, it's a little confusing, but we answered their questions, showed that we had an 18% increase in our breakfast, in our lunches, and we had a 160% increase in our breakfast. And so that in itself, then, when you put those into the state and you get the money back and so forth, that's why the increases and so forth. One thing that they want us to do is because we have, we are on the federal program for K through eight, that they want us to keep all of our expenditures and revenues separate because nine through 12 is their own program at this time, and so, and we haven't, we haven't done that, but that's something that we need to do from this point on. So they're working with the business office to be able to do that so that, and Tahrir, so that any of the, all expenditures and revenues are separated between the two food accounts. So, and then we also have a phone call coming up in the next couple of weeks with S&amp;P Global. That's the group that does our bonding and so forth. And remember when Jeff Seeley was here, somebody asked, is this going to affect our ratings? He said it might. So they called and said that they had, they saw by our audits and so forth that they want to talk to us, interview us again. So myself, Dan, Jeff, I'm not sure if Jeff will be there, but two people from Ellers will be there with us to kind of answer their questions and so forth, and then they will determine that in the future, if our bond rating is less, goes down from a double A or a A, double A negative is what it is. So again, it's something that they feel they need to do to just to kind of go through the process. It shouldn't affect anything that's out, that we have out right now. It would affect future borrowing if we, if you went out for a bond later on or future building and so forth, then it might affect that rating at that time. But we, I think it's April 7th is when we have that meeting with them. So I'll keep you posted on, on how that comes out. The Verizon Tower, do you remember? We've been dealing for those that were on the board. Unfortunately, I will say that we have been dealing with this. It was a contract that was signed in 2017 without a sunset date, and so they are now saying that they want to, and they came last year, and they would like to put up that tower starting this, this summer, actually. And it's right going to be next to the, the right field or left field fence in the, next to the baseball field. And so that where it will be, the district, the district will receive $7,000 a year, and then after five years, it goes up 10% and, and does, and then each five years, and it goes for 25 years is what that, that agreement said. I did look it over or have our attorneys look it over, and they said unfortunately there's nothing that we can do. We just, but there is a, they are going next week on Tuesday, the first, and I know you will be in interviews, but anybody who wants to go to the city planning meeting at City Hall, they're meeting with, they're going to do their, their plan there, and then the following week will be at the city council meeting if it passes through the city planning. So anybody that wants to go and talk about a Verizon Tower behind us and can certainly go and speak to the city, the city planning commission. So that happens next week. Also, we did have radon tests completed at the high school and primary school. We have these on a rotation, and so this year it was a high school and primary school, and you have to do it during the heating season, and so they just recently completed those, and we passed. High school and primary schools passed the radon test. So they will be good for, I think, the next three or 40 years. Like I said, we're on rotation with schools. Seniors present their life plans. The last couple of weeks before spring break, the seniors were presenting their life plans as part of the profile of the graduate, and if you had a chance to come up here and sit with some seniors, talk to them about their life plans and what they want to do with their future, and my question to them was always, you know, a lot of them have been here for seven, eight years or longer, and, and so what, you know, what can we do in Byron for, for kids and to be better? And actually, a lot of them said nothing. They really enjoyed their experiences, and some of them are pretty, pretty cool what they're going to be doing, so. And then the congratulations to girls hockey, and then Dodge County Wildcats for winning their first ever state tournament championship. They beat Warroad in overtime. And last year they lost to them, I believe. I don't remember if it was overtime, but this year they beat them, and this is the first time in team history that they've won a state championship. And congratulations to our boys' basketball team for winning the Section 1 AAA championship and then participating in the state tournament. Unfortunately, they lost in the quarterfinals to a tough Alexandria team, but they turned around. I don't have it in this one, but they turned around, won the next two games, and won the consolation championship. So congratulations, Mr. Finney, and to the boys. That was awesome. I did get it into the buzz though, so I made sure I got into that. And then congratulations to Mr. Swanson. The Byron Middle School Principal was recently named the Southeast Middle Level Principal of the Year for the MASSP, which is Minnesota Association of Secondary School Principals. So if he chooses, he can go on and complete more paperwork and be considered amongst the eight districts, the eight regions in the state, and then they will choose the state principal, the middle level principal of the year, if he chooses to go for that. And that would happen, I think it's in January of next year is when all that happens. So he fills out the paperwork and does all, and interviews and stuff in the fall. I also want to thank Deputy Jacobson. We recently were informed, very recently, that Homestead County Sheriff's Department, that Deputy Nate Jacobson, our school resource officer, I think he's been here two, three years now, has done a great job, but he's moving on to a different position. So we are going to have a new SRO, Michael Dirks, and he'll be transitioning in the, over the next few weeks with Officer Jacobson. And, and so I just want to thank, oh, I spelled his name wrong. I want to thank Officer Jacobson for all of his hard work. He builds great relationships with kids, is around, and you see him at all the evening events and those sort of things, and the kids love him, and so I, I appreciate all the work and that he's done over the last three years. Enrollment, we're presently at 2331 for this year, but remember for 25, 26, we are presently at 127 kindergarten students. And so we're at 2331 right now, but if you rolled every, every grade level up from, from now, we're at 2275 for next year. And so that will make a significant impact on, on the school district. Any questions regarding this?
I did hear from a community member about the cell phone tower, and I know that you discussed this probably ad nauseam before I was officially on the board, but I just want to verify there's nothing else the district can do, correct?
Nothing else at this point.
So if, if people have concerns, it has to be approved by the city now?
Yeah, so they bring their plans and everything to the city council, and it'll have to be the city that says no. And Al Roder, the city administrator, did a great job in trying to help us find a different place and find, help them find it, but it's not high enough, or it was too close to their other tower. It has to be a certain distance away, and so we tried a lot of different options, but when they signed it in 2017, they didn't put up a sunset date, had to be up by a certain time. I believe Dr. Page, from what I understand, had asked them to, to wait with it because of the, when they were thinking about first doing it in 18, 19, 20, they were looking at the, the building bond and, and putting fields behind here. So they didn't want to have them put, because they didn't have the exact plan yet. And so now that all the construction is done, those are out there, now it's like, okay, we want to put up our tower, and there's, and there's only a couple spots back here that's available because it can't be too close to a property line if it were to tip over or whatever. It can't be falling to somebody else's property, and so there's only a couple spots right back here that, that could fit. But we tried. I mean, so the suggestion would be to go to the city council planning or, or to the city council meeting or the city planning commission and, and state their concerns.
Okay. Thank you.
Do we have any old or unfinished business? I don't think so.
Sorry, I have one more question.
Yeah, sure, sorry.
Yeah, so for the school lunches, I did not follow that explanation. Why do we have more breakfast than before?
Because remember, this was for last year, the 23, 24 school year, and that's when the free lunches came back, and, and so we have, we, our, our breakfast has gone up 116% or so, and 160%. So then we, we put that into the state, and then that's where we got the money, the extra money as part of that as well, because the free meals, breakfast, and lunches began the beginning of last year.
So this is our total cost or is reimbursement we're getting from the state?
That's reimbursement. That's additional.
Got it.
We, we made an extra $92,000.
Got it, okay.
The problem with Fund II is that you can only spend the money on things that deal with, you know, like ovens or tables or something that deal with the cafeteria, the food service. So it's not like you can take it and put it into your general fund.
Yeah, thanks for explaining that. The Fund III that was previous year. And this is something new that we just have on this new enrollment report. It says that there's a waitlist for a few grades. Is that, what's the process there? And it's for the grades where we already have full classes admittedly. So I just wanted to.
So what we, what we do in those, if there's a waitlist, then we'll come back in April, at the April meeting, and we'll take a look at where we're at at that point and admit anybody or accept any open enrollments at that point. If they are, and they're only on a waitlist if there's more than 180 in a grade level already.
Yeah.
And then they're put on a waitlist, and then, so we usually do it in January, and then we do it again in April, and then in May, and then usually we'll see if there's anybody left in, in June. We try not to go into July because it gets pretty late for scheduling and for parents to know, to wonder if they're going to be in or not. So we'll relook at that again in April.
Thank you.
All right. We'll move on to new business, the discussion and action on the November 2025 operating referendum.
Yes, so thank you, Ann Downe. Sign into account from another tab. To do it this way, I think. Anyway, so, I mean, unless, is there a way I can fix that, Tim? Do I have to just go in and sign? Let me see if I can do it this way.
You're Tim, right?
I just probably have to do it differently here. Okay, so the, I wanted to just briefly explain kind of the history of what's happened over the last year, and then talk about the Byron, for Byron School District to go out for a referendum this fall. This is brought up by the steering committee when we met because they, they would like to get, start thinking about communications, start trying to recruit people to be part of that committee, trying to have community members and so forth about, so this is a very high level. And what I'm looking for tonight is not, not the details about how much you would go out for or anything like that, but the question to be, it's just that approval that the board is going to go out for a referendum in November, that, and, and that people who are starting the planning can go out and plant. They don't want to get so far in front and then not have the board say they're going out for a referendum. So it's kind of, we're at the point now where things have to start happening, and so we need to have this approval after the presentation, looking for approval that says you will be going out for a referendum in November, and then later we'll decide on, on the cost. So, so just a quick reminder, remember that we went out for, we had a couple, $1.6 million in 2023, in 2023 for, to balance the 2024 school year, and then the, the negative 1% or less than 1%, the district's unassigned fund balance dropped from 8% to less than, than 1% after the 2024 school year. We went out for a referendum last November. It was for $800 per student, and that would bring in about $1.9 million a year, and it was set for two years. It was $800 per student with inflationary increases each year, and, and it failed 58% to 42%. And as you look at the budget in December this past year, we, after verifying all the numbers, our 24, 25 district budget was confirmed to be very close to balanced, and then this corrected previous information that, if you remember, your preliminary budget last year said even with the $1.6 million, we'd be still a million dollars short after this year, a million dollars more. But with everything verified and all the numbers moving forward, that is, again, being somewhat balanced. So that was a huge, a great thing for this district moving forward. Currently, our revenues and expenditures, as you've seen on reports, are on track to maintain that balanced budget for this year. So some of the challenges ahead, legislative funding for our schools for next year, we know will be 2.74%, providing approximately about $172,000. Dan brought that up and talked about that at the last meeting. But remember that 2.74% is only on the student formula. It's, it's only on about $18 million of the $28 million budget. And so, you know, so that, we're not making, and that's with the decrease projection that we have in enrollment. So, you know, that's going to be a challenge. And we talked about the decrease in enrollment this year. We have 174 seniors graduating, and about right now we have 127 in kindergarten, so we're hoping for a few more to come. Another one is, remember in 23, 24, we had 28% increase in health insurance. We have a 29% increase for this year in health insurance. Right now, we're projected, last time we talked to the insurance company, to be around 20%. We're hoping to make that a bit less, but that's, but we're having another meet scheduled, or we'll be scheduling another meet in mid-April, so we will have a better idea as we go into negotiations, as the district goes in negotiations, what that increase will be. We will speak about negotiations, have for five employee groups, and the teachers, the administrators, and the paraprofessionals and directors are all groups that have negotiations, and the support staff, remember they're on a, an agreement, a goodwill agreement, so they don't necessarily negotiate, but you will have to look at their contracts and look at possible increases for them as well, so. And the district must continue to increase its unassigned fund balance to, to meet the policy of, the policy goal of 8%. So as you are working on your budgets and working to increase your revenues, you have to keep that in mind, that you got to get that back up. It may not be all in one year, but, you know, maybe over several years, but you got to try to get that to 8%. And also remember that in smaller districts, it might be better to be closer, in a district this size, to 10 to 12%. But the board policy is 8%. And then some possible unfunded mandates that we're hearing from the state, and some new course requirements that we have to do. There'll be the paid family leave, they're still trying to figure that out, and how much we would have to, to pay. Right now, it's up to a, last time I heard, it was a 0.88% tax, and that, if that's split between the employer and employee, like, like they say, it would cost us around $60,000 to $70,000 for that 0.44%. If it ends up being, if you, that's part of negotiations, if it ends up being the whole thing, okay, I bought $120,000 to $130,000. So, but they're still working on that, on that at the Capitol, and still trying to figure that out. And then the unemployment insurance for our paraprofessionals and bus drivers, the elderly employees over the summer. The last two years, they had $135 million set aside, and it covered the last two years, but right now there's only about $25 or $30 million left, and it won't, it won't cover everything. Last year, we paid about $138,000 or so in our unemployment, and we were reimbursed from the state the last two years. But again, they talked about adding another $35 million to that pot, but at some point, you know, if, that's just, you know, pushing it down the road and those sort of things. That's, so that's a big, something to watch because that will be a big hit on school districts is that unemployment insurance, if that continues, and they don't continue to fund that. Hopefully, they'll give us that, give school districts the $35 million or at least make it through this year, but they know that if they don't increase it, what they have left will not make it this year. So then they will fall back on school districts to make up the difference. And then we also need to upkeep capital needs and facility maintenance, things like, well, Jen Agnew will be coming in the next few meetings to talk about technology and the needs, including like phones and so forth, they're coming out of date in the next couple of years, and some of those challenges that the district will face. Roofs, we're having our roofs being evaluated to see which, which ones need the most work and how much that costs and those sort of things, and try to prepare for that. We'll have the facilities committee look at that when they meet later in the spring, and then same thing with parking lots. These are things that the facilities committee, some of it can be done with LTFM, some of it's being talked about at the state legislature about adding more money to be able to levy for, like roofs. But remember, the LTFM, our, in Byron, is still $800,000 in the negative because of what was borrowed, the 1.5 was borrowed eight years ago. We have now worked it to $840,000, I believe it is, still in the negative. We want to get that out of the negative as well. So, but you'll, you'll want to keep an eye on those capital needs and those facilities. Those are some big ticket items. And Byron is not alone. I shared this with the board in an update, but I wanted other people, this is something that was shared with our superintendent group and around, but you can see it starts with the lowest enrollments, goes up to the highest enrollments, and you can see how much, you know, people are reducing for next year or adjusting. I think the word they use is alignments, they're realigning next year. But you can see that, and this is just the ones in Southeast Minnesota or Southern Minnesota. So we are not alone. A lot of people are facing the same types of situations, maybe not as, as high, but if you look at some of those districts at $889,000, you'll get, for example, Train, $750,000, that's probably, when you look at the percentage of their budgets, it's probably comparable to what we looked at for this year. But again, remember, we did this over two years, so it was more like a 3.2 over two years, so. But this is, this was sent out a couple of weeks ago to the superintendent, and I thought I would want to share it with you as well. So as we move into for next year's budgets, because the operating referendum failed, we did unfortunately have to make $1.6 million in adjustments, and, and that meant a reduction in staff. There's higher class sizes in the elementary level, there's fewer counselors, reductions in supply budgets happen, reductions in some activities and athletics, and, you know, so I think I mentioned in the next slide, so there, there isn't that low hanging fruit anymore. Now we're starting to cut off some branches, and, and it really became more, more painful this time. Even though we had a longer time to plan for it, it's still, as you get to that point, you're, you're now into your staffing, which is really difficult. So a preliminary 25, 26 budget for next year will be presented to you in June. Need for a referendum with approximately $3.2 million of adjustments over two years, we've become significant, the adjustments have become significant in staffing and programming. Without a referendum in place, that the district will need to continue to make adjustments each year and make, make cuts. It may not be $1.6 million, it may be less, or, but it may be close to that, and, and so you, we really need to look at a, my recommendation is to look at a referendum for this fall again. And we kind of told people in the fall, if it didn't pass, we'd have to come back, and for an operating referendum, you can only come back in Novembers. So a steering committee has been formed, there's board members, there's some administrators, a teacher, and a parent. They're developing timelines, they're talking about communications, and they're starting to figure out which stakeholders to involve, how do things get moved, things forward. The other thing that they're doing is they're gaining information from consultants as they build this timeline. What do people who have done this before, what do they recommend? Talked about surveys before, there's different types of surveys, so they're kind of vetting that out. They're talking about communication, kind of looking at outside companies that might be able to help with that. So you can see that some things are already being put into place, and they want to start putting out some communications, not like how much it is, but just the need, the things we've talked about here, and start putting them out in the small snippets in the buzz or in other areas they've talked about. And then in the district budget committee and the school board will determine the amount and, and the question that would go out probably somewhere in May or June. I think it doesn't have to be officially in until the middle of July, but I think it would be best that once people leave for the summer, that you know what, you know, the board would know where they're going, and so that, that group can really focus on getting things ready, because the big push will be in August when people start coming back. You're going to want everything in place, all your communications, everything ready to go. But the board will update the website to reflect any information along the way. The board tonight votes just if you're going to go out for a referendum, and then without any real particulars besides, you're going to go out for the November election, and then, like it says here, the board will vote on a resolution for the amount and the question, the exact question, summer around or before July 1. Again, my recommendation would be you do it at the end of May or, or June, for sure, early part of June, so they can get things started and going. Because we have a, we have a very energetic group that wants to get things moving, they meet at 7:00 in the morning, and, because that's when everybody can meet, and, but they, I, again, I'm here asking this so that they don't put a lot of effort in, a lot of time in, and then the board decides not to go out. And I think Dan would concur that the district needs to go out for a referendum again. I don't think you can afford not to try to go out for a referendum again this fall, so.
Yeah, I feel like Dan has made it crystal clear over the last few months that without this, we'll be making cuts, no doubt about it. And I think we're lucky that our teachers and staff have kept things going and walk through our buildings right now. Our kids don't know what the adults in those buildings have had to endure, but that is not sustainable. And I think without it, it will be really hard to keep our district looking like it is. Yeah, I agree that we need to go out for it.
Do you have any information on if the
Do you have any information on if the employees are using the telehealth, if that is having an impact on our programs?
They were, they were starting to use it in the fall, we made another push out. That's, that's the information that they will present to us in April.
Great.
To see how much of that telehealth that we're using and utilizing and we keep pushing out, every send information out, we'll see. Any other questions regarding the information I just presented? Again, it's, it'll be a lot of planning and it'll be a lot of information being sent out, but.
Do we have a motion to take action on the twenty twenty-five operating referendum?
I make a motion to go out for an operating referendum in November of twenty twenty-five.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion carries. So now we can get to the details on that. Update on the superintendent search, real brief, we did have, we're very fortunate to receive fourteen applications. And tonight after this meeting, there'll be a special meeting for us to decide on the candidates that will move into the semifinals for the first round of interviews, which will take place Wednesday and Thursday of this week. Discussion on the pay to ride transportation for educational benefits.
Yeah, so part of our adjustments is that we increased the pay to ride. Last year we started it for this year, it was seventy-five dollars for in, in town, if within walking distance, a two mile walking distance. And it was seventy-five dollars per student and a hundred and fifty dollars per family. With the adjustments, we moved that up to one twenty-five per student and two fifty per family, but we did not, and then for our kids who are on open enrollment that, that we pick up, we charged them four hundred dollars right now and we moved that up to five hundred dollars. We kept the family max at eight hundred dollars. But what we didn't talk about and what was the students do our educational benefits and, and who qualify for those. And so in the past, and what we did this year, it was proved that what we did was had a hundred and twenty five, I'm just, oh, it was fifty dollars for in, in, in the district, instead of paying seventy-five dollars, they paid fifty dollars per student or one twenty-five per family. And for outside, the open enrollment, they paid two fifty per student or four, or with a four hundred dollar maximum. The other part though is that there are some families who really have, give more benefits or more reduction and so they're at, they were at one eighty-five and two ninety as a, and so my, with everything going on and, and it really affected, it would only affect five to six families for the in, in district and maybe ten to twelve families for out for the open role. My recommendation is that you raise the prices for everything else that you would not raise the prices for, for these students at this time. That's my recommendation and if that's, if that's fine, you don't have to approve that because that's, is, it's currently what it is. If you want to increase it or do something different, then somebody would have to make a motion and, and change that at this point. But at this point, I think that we would keep this, the, the same rates for the students on, for the families on educational benefits.
Any questions or discussion on?
Do you have an opinion about it, Dan? It seems like it would affect a very small number of families.
Right, it's just, it's such a small amount.
Right. Okay.
Okay. So we'll just keep it as is and then Val will get the information out to everybody now about signing up for transportation for next year. So thank you.
Okay. We'll move on to the action on the LPNRN pay range in the support staff agreement?
Yes, so we talked about this at the last meeting and what we need an approval to add a lane or a category in our support staff agreement for LPN and RNs. And you can see that the range would be seventeen forty to, or excuse me, twenty-two dollars to twenty-seven seventy-five and this is right in the same type of range that other districts are, are doing. And then, because what we would like to do is already post for those coming up here in April to see if there are people that would want to sign on for next school year and, and try to put that out there. Because remember we will be asking them, our preference would be for an LPN or RN. If we don't find somebody, then in the summer, we would put it out there for a health aide as well. But right now our preference is LPN and RN. So, but in order to do that, we need to put that lane or that category in the contract and then we can do our, our medical benefits or get, you know, we can charge back for some of those and do, do that. So that will help us as well as we can take our person who's technically an LPN right now and put her at that pay scale for the rest of this year and, and get some of that, those medical benefits back. So, any questions?
No, I think we, we just wish not to do this. We'll pay for itself, probably make this money. I do have a question about the current LPN though. We, you know, we talked about doing an audit of our third party reimbursement and Danny Marant, I mean, we talked about this. So I'm glad you're here because I'm wondering, I have felt uncomfortable that we decreased in LSN without really understanding our third party or MA reimbursement. We know now that we currently have an LPN that we're not getting third party reimbursement for because they are not coded correctly, so.
Well, they're not in that position. They hold the licensure, but they're not in that position.
But they're, they hold the license and they're doing the cares. We're not getting reimbursed for it and could be, and we will be once it changes.
Right, yes.
And we haven't been all year. So I'm wondering what your advice is about how we can audit. It seems to me like, you know, we just found out that that LPN was coded incorrectly, it sounds like recently. That's a problem to me. I think we need to do a better job of looking through our third party reimbursement and auditing it somehow. I don't know what that looks like, but do you have any experience with that or advice?
Well, I think with the, we're going to staff it up better in that department, so that's, it's not like, we kind of cut that out and dismissed a step there and now scramble to come back.
Right.
And then next year with the, with the dedicated person doing that, it'll be much easier. And of course, if you had a business manager in here full-time, that could be something to look at too.
For, for this year, we can use Z, the person at Z who does the MA billing part and they could help us try to figure that out.
Okay.
And along with Marie, Marie Kennedy, our special ed director, she can help figure that out as well because they're the ones who are working with the MA billing.
The reason I really want the information is number one, I, obviously we want to get all the reimbursement we can get, but also I think there's probably a very good chance that we'll find that we, the RNs and LPNs will kind of pay for themselves versus hiring a health aide. And so I'm glad we're doing this and I hope we do hire LPNs and RNs and.
I can, I can tell you that we've had one person already asking when the posting's going out.
Good, great, good.
So I'm, I'm hopeful in this community that we would be able to, to do that as well. Okay.
Any further questions or discussion? Would look for a motion to take action on the LPNRN category in the support staff agreement.
I make the motion to, can I just say to take action on the contract or do I need to be more specific?
Just to add, you can say to make a lane or a category for LPNRN using the twenty-two dollar to twenty-seven seventy-five pay range.
I make a motion to add a LPNRN lane or category to the contract in the pay range proposed. Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion carries. We'll have a discussion now on the board district operational plan for twenty-five, twenty-six.
So when we met last time, we talked about the district operational plan and that is something that the, each school, district, each school does in the spring, so it, but usually they look at what the board goals will be and then they kind of, sometimes will move some of their goals around that as well. Not all their goals, but maybe one or two. And so I, I know, I think Jeremy had sent out two people and asked them for, you know, what their preferences are and then had, then we met and then I put together a draft of what that would look like, sent it out. It is a little bit different, it's just necessarily goals, it's more of what the board will do to kind of keep monitoring and the first goal is the financial stability. The second goal was students, staff and mental health and the third one was the profile of graduate. So if you looked at it, most of it was the reports that you would get from the superintendent or the finance director would, would be part of that financial stability. And then the other ones would be reports you would receive from our admin team or our counselors in the building about how things are going. So when you're having reports each month, those would be the, you could have people come in and give presentations, you could ask them questions, what's going on, keep on top of things, ask them how they could be supported, those sort of things. Keeps the board at a governance level and so forth and keeps track of what's going on. And then the monthly or the quarterly reports that the principals give would be around the, that you see, it would be around the profile of gra, profile of graduate. And again, they could bring in different types of presentations to show the board how the profile of graduate is working in the district and how it's, it's progressing and improving each year. So the board doesn't necessarily have a goal of what you're going to do, it's more of the information you want to receive from the other buildings and so forth and from the admin team and from the personnel in the district so that they know this is what you would expect moving, moving forward. Again, this is a draft, doesn't necessarily have to be approved tonight, but if I have an idea at least how to move forward and when I meet with the administrators, I can let them know here are the, here are some of the, the thoughts or the focus of the board again for next year.
And in our conversation, Mike and I, it was more like the board doesn't really have the goals here, it's the admin that has the goals. We just want to let them know that here's our priorities and by laying it out this way, that's how we came up with, how do we keep track of this as a priority better than what we have? And by seeing the specific reports, I thought would be a much better outcome and, and inform the information for all of us.
Yeah, I like that. I like, I think my concern in the past years, the last couple of years is we prioritize mental health and then cut, so that these targets are at least realistic, I think. I had a couple of other ideas and I don't know, now hearing you say that, I don't know if they fit into this, but a couple of other additional ideas, not to replace these, but additional ideas I had for board priorities included something like integrity or excellence in leadership and organizational support. And my notes say it's essential to meaningful relationships with parents, caregiver, staff, students, community members, take ownership of actions and decisions, families and staff, encourage to share ideas and inputs, student voices value. I feel like that, I don't know, I feel like that's like an achievable goal and something that I think could be important. And then the other thing I'd written down was build parent caregiver and community engagement, maintain and grow productive community of online partnerships, engage parents and caregivers and recognize effective communication is essential to building relationships. And I think our teachers already do a really good job, but I think we as a board could improve, and I think we have and are continuing to our access. And I think with the referendum, that will be even more important to do town halls and increase our community.
My thought goes to like the, the second point. Would we say community engagement would be our board priority and then break down like how do we gauge that?
Sure.
You know what I mean? To, to not necessarily make it too vague, but also to, what other ideas do our principals have, what other ideas do our teachers have and that?
Yeah, I, I don't want to put more work on their plate. You know what I mean? I want their input for sure, but I don't want to create more work for them with, you know, because of red tape we put in our way. But yeah, I think, I don't know what you guys think about it.
I would say less is more. The more priorities you put, the harder it is to actually make it a priority. If you have, if you have, I don't know, every meeting I've ever been a part of, there's always one or two bullet points, three at max. If you go any further than that, the information is not retained. So if you have four or five bullet points or priorities, how can you necessarily prioritize anything at that point? It just, it muddies the water.
You feel and the focus would get diluted? Any other questions or discussion?
Anyone else have thoughts?
Well, at the same time, it will help us to lean same focus on community relationship and communication. Which is an example, right? Survey that was sent out about superintendent search, right? About the values that we are holding. People in the stream thought that the way this survey was to just be distributed with trust or reach the exact target audience. It feels like it hasn't, so we could have spent a little more time thinking about that question. To me, adding that one priority, given our situation, I, I don't think it's, it's gonna disrupt us from the goal here.
But I do agree that, that, that what you shared could be summarized into one bullet point that was posted too.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that sounds good. I, I agree that we can, these are all different enough and I, I think we can, I think it would be okay to add a fourth, but what do you guys think?
Still a little bit on, on how many priorities do they have?
No, we've, we've had four in the past, but I mean, like you mentioned, it was really only one.
Yeah, what was the fourth? Because that was just.
Facilities.
That's right. Okay.
And it kind of fell by the wayside with decreasing enrollment and, but we were working in the middle of, of construction also, so the facilities planning.
Yeah, so it made sense at the time.
And so it made, yeah.
And I think in the past, my memory, if, if my memory is correct, is that the targets were almost all only achieved by, or many of them were achieved by spending money and that's not realistic right now, right? And I, so I, I like that these targets aren't like increasing mental health providers. Like obviously that would be a dream, but that's not our reality right now.
Yep, that's right.
Hopefully it will be soon, but I like that our targets, I like the way you changed them, I think that's, I think that's good.
And I'm, I'm not opposed to having a fourth. I mean, I, I understand what, what David is saying, I don't think we'd want five or six, but you're right, it is, how do we, but it's not a.
I also feel like, sorry.
No, I may say this wrong. It's not a priority for the board, it's a board priority for the district.
Right.
So we're, we're asking all of our people to be more engaged in the community. Yeah, so I just want to make sure I'm on the same page. Yes, yep.
Yeah, the way I look at it is we're asking them to help us. And I feel like we actually are already prioritizing that as a board since January and so to me it felt like a natural addition.
Any other questions, discussion?
I don't think adding it as a fourth would be too much of a distraction. Like Alicia said, we are already kind of doing it, but then at least it's there for nine years and, you know.
Well, it shows the community, we care about this too. Because we do.
Yep.
Yeah, from all their feedback and we want to know what they're thinking and do a survey and all these different people, get them something wrong.
I, I think we'd have to figure out what our measurements are, but that's just logistics that we could hammer out.
Right. The achievements.
Yeah.
What it's like maybe a management would be, have we discussed this when we're making a decision about some communication policy or anything like that or related decisions, right? Isn't one of our oldest points to consider when we're, we're giving these questions that are related to that?
Yeah, it's me.
Yeah, I think it seems like.
So can we work on the wording of it then, just come back?
So yeah, if you want to send Jeremy some ideas of wording and then we can bring it back to the work session in two weeks on the seventh. And then. And then, but, I, I, so what I'm hearing is, is that it'll be these three plus, uh, something around. But really, the fourth one is about the board communication. Or you're taking district communication, you know, you didn't want to add more to other people, so, you know, that communication part of it. That's what I'm hearing, or is there be something?
It's more engagement, I think is.
Engagement, okay.
Yeah.
And are you, can I have from the board perspective or the whole district perspective?
I think, um, like, I think, I think there are people in our buildings already do a really good job with it. But I think the more we can, I mean, if, if we can increase that, great. But I think, to me, the biggest issue that needs to be addressed is the way we are communicating with the community.
So, I, and we can look at that, and I just want to make sure I'm telling the administrator the right thing, right?
Right.
And so forth, but it sounds like it's going to be mostly the board communication. I would also, um, recommend that as you work through your board handbook, that there's a part in there about communication and how much, and who, how do you communicate, you know, different ways to communicate, and you, and you list that in your handbook, so that.
Yeah.
And you can say, here's all the different things, and you can even add to it in your handbook as you go.
And that could be one of the targets, so.
That could be one of the targets.
Right, that's right, yeah.
Or, or goals.
And that would help you, that handbook would also help you to figure out how to engage with, with community.
Yeah, yep.
Okay.
Okay, so we will not take action tonight. We will bring that back, adding that fourth item.
And then you can discuss it, and then, again, you can take final action, approve it. At, because we want to try to keep all the voting during a regular board meeting as much as possible. So then you'll just come back again in, in April seventh, and then you'll approve it on April twenty-first. What, and we can work, wordsmith it a little bit on April seventh, and then approve it all on April twenty-first at that point.
And the biggest thing for time-wise is to let the admin team know where our minds are for focus, but clearly have a very distinct direction.
Yes.
Okay. All right, we'll take action on our second reading and adoption of the policy amendments. Start with 101.
So, um, 101, there was really not, um, anything changed except for the Minnesota statutes, chapters, you know, the things that are read here. We didn't change anything, um, when it comes to the wording or the purpose of, of this one, the legal stats of the school district. So, just need to, and then the second one, and we will do both of them. Um, the school district administration, um, again, it, it was just this part down here, um, with the references. And that was the only thing that was changed at that time. And so, um, we will, there, there was one more, but then when I looked, um, there wasn't anything that was changed. So it just was added, so that's now part of the consent agenda.
Okay.
So if you can have a, an action to approve policy 101 and, uh, policy 301.
Any questions or discussion, or a motion to move forward?
Make a motion to approve, uh, policy amendments 101 and 101, or 301.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Carries. We'll take action on the school nutrition programs, renewal of the food service management contract, 2526.
So every year for the, the Department of Education, we have to list who our food service is going to be. So for next year, we are still under contract. Um, I think at the end of next year is when, um, you can go back out and, and, right now, we have Tahoe. But I remember, well, my, I think it was my first year here, at the end of my first year, we did, and Chartwell and some other companies come in and give bids. And we, this whole scoring process and everything like that. But we're on a full, five-year contract with Tahoe, so towards the end of next year, being, so you'll probably have to go through that bidding process again. But right now, we're on a contract, and we just have to, okay, um, have approval from the board that we're going to use Tahoe again, um, next year as our food service.
I was just gonna say, is five years a common, like, I don't even know.
Yes.
Okay.
And does this affect, um, I know we had to overclass to review our high school nutrition program. Does this affect that?
No. So the different, a lot of schools, a lot of school districts use Tahoe, and they're on the free, free, free lunch program for K through twelve, right?
Okay.
And they still serve, it's, it's who's making the food, giving out the food, those sort of things. Um, so it doesn't matter which company that you're using for, for that service.
Okay.
So I know that, um, on April seventh, we're going to be having a, a presentation from the high school principal and, uh, food service director from Tahoe to, to talk about that.
Great.
And so, but it doesn't matter which company you use.
Okay.
This just says, we're, we're asking them to make, make our food for us every day, and hire the cooks and doing all those.
So April seventh is when the discussion will happen about whether we want to be back on the.
Well, that's when the presentation will be, and then you can decide how you want to go from there.
Okay.
And have that discussion, decide if you want to move it forward or if you need further study or whatever.
Okay, so before then, it seems important to get the word out there that we're going to be discussing that, because there's a lot of parents in the community who.
Agree.
Have questions about that.
Yeah, yeah, that's a good idea.
Because I think when it was set years ago, now those parents don't have kids in the school district anymore, so the new ones coming up are waiting that. Why, why are we not on the national food program?
So is that something we should put in the buzzers?
Probably. Can you put that?
I don't think that warrants an email.
Somebody from the board wants to send me an article about it, and I will put in buzz or, or whatever. But just remember that, uh, as, as anything else, though, I mean, I, I understand your, your conversation, but it's just a presentation on how things work between the, um, you know, with the high school and the reasons why they are off of it or not doing the free lunch. And it is also taped, and so people can watch it the next day if they don't want to be here. You're not having any public comment regarding it, um, you know, those sort of things. It's just a presentation. And then the board can decide, do they need to do, what do they need to do next? But if you want to write something out and it's, and to let people know that you're having a discussion, that's fine. But they can also, you know, you don't do that for a lot of other, for everything else either, so.
We could just send it out after and say, um, this, here's the link, starting at whatever minute mark.
Yeah, that might be.
It might be better for us to hear the information, kind of get a sense of what we think we might do or discuss.
And if there's a presentation, you can add the presentation.
Right.
That, there, the presenters, powerpoint and stuff, they can go on and take a look at that as well. You know, those sort of things, um, because you're not going to be voting on anything that night. You're just going to be listening and, and then decide how you want to get more information in the future or how you want to move. So, uh, again, you don't do that for every topic, so to do this for this one, it would be kind of different.
I feel like maybe we can see what kind of community feedback we feel like we need, so we can make a specific ask for the feedback when we send it out. I don't know.
Yeah.
Okay.
Two questions. Um, so, um, do they employ all the staff?
They employ all the staff, yes.
All the staff, okay. And they purchase all the ingredients and all that?
Yes, yep.
And then that, that their increase is 3.1%.
Yes, that.
Is that contractual?
What's that?
Is that contractual?
Yeah, so that's what we, each year, they tell, they, they show us, um, and what the increase will be. Um, and it's, it is, um, the same throughout their, their programs. So that would be, that's what, that would go up next year by that much of a percent, so.
And like, in their initial contract for this five-year term, right, did they have a range of, of how much the increase would be?
I'd have to go back and take a look, but yeah, usually there is a range that they, they just can't go and ask for a lot, right?
Right, okay.
And they, they've been great to work with. Um, they've worked, they've been with us for many years, so.
Okay. Any other questions, or would look for a motion to, uh, approve the renewal of the food service management contract?
Make a motion to approve the renewal of the food service contract with Tahoe.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Motion carries. We'll take action on a resolution, uh, placing a continuing contract, tenured teacher on unrequested leave of absence upon acquiescence of such placement. Did I say that right? Acquiescence?
Yeah, yeah. So again, there was one staff member during the reductions, or during the adjustments, that was, uh, a tenured staff member that was put on unrequested leave of absence. So you had to prove that. We would have to offer that to them. They had, um, fourteen days to, to, excuse me, have a hearing about it or whatever. We did not hear from that staff member. So this is the official resolution then, just as you did to them three weeks ago with, uh, with the other group. Uh, but this is now the official one that says that he is placed on unrequested leave of absence. Now, remember what that is, is, um, it is, and for this case, because it's listed here as Mr. Bubala, a Spanish teacher at the high school. There aren't enough sections to have him full-time. So if we were to add sections again, to go back to a full-time or add sections in Spanish, he would be the first one that, um, for the next two years, that could, that, we, when we compost it or do anything, we would have to offer that position to him if he would want it for the next two years. So that's exactly, so that's essentially what this is saying, so. If somebody wants to read it, and then we would need a roll call vote to approve it.
Somebody with their computer, okay, to read the resolution? Okay.
Do you want to read the entire thing?
We'll do, start, yeah, whereas, down, uh, whereas.
Whereas, whereas the school board of independent district number 531 adopted a resolution proposing placement of Jason Bubala on an unrequested leave of absence on August sixth, 2025, on the grounds of financial limitation. Whereas said written notice of the proposed placement on unrequested leave of absence was received by Jason Bubala by personal service on March fifth, 2025. And whereas said written notice of the proposed placement on unrequested leave of absence contained a statement setting forth the reasons for the proposed placement, as well as a statement that Jason Bubala was entitled to a hearing before the school board, provided they make a request in writing within fourteen days of receipt of said notice, and that no hearing was requested within said fourteen-day period. It constituted acquiescence by Jason Bubala to the school board's proposed action. And whereas no written request for a hearing was received by the school board superintendent from Jason Bubala, uh, I think there's a typo there, as of March twenty-first, twenty twenty-five, there's a A missing. Whereas said failure to make written requests for a hearing within fourteen days after receipt of notice of proposed placement on unrequested leave of absence constitutes acquiescence by Jason Bubala to said placement on unrequested leave of absence. May it hereby resolve by the school board of independent.
Nope, no, keep going. Thank you.
May it hereby resolve by the school board of independent school district number 531 that Jason Bubala be and hereby is placed on unrequested leave of absence as a teacher of independent school district number 531 on the ground of financial limitations at the end of the 2024 to 2025 school year, effective August sixteenth, 2025, in accordance with the district master agreement pursuant to Minnesota statute 122A, uh, forty subdivision ten, without pay or fringe benefits. Be it further resolved that a notice of placement on unrequested leave, together with a copy of this resolution be forwarded to the teacher personally and in the affidavit of the same in place in the teacher's personal file, together with a copy of the notice and resolution.
Thank you. Would entertain a motion to approve that resolution?
I make a motion to approve.
Second. Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Yep, Jeremy?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
Alicia?
Aye.
Nadia?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
All right, so that carries Byron City Council update. Were you able?
No.
Okay. I have the ZED update, and I will read for Carrie, so I'll express her emotions. We went over the enrollment numbers as of two twenty-five, twenty-five. The special education population in the ALC continues to grow. Futures has had three students fully transitioned back to their member district and five that are currently in the process. This is awesome news. Uh, the ZED annual traveling art show is moving through the member districts along with a virtual art show online, and was recently held in Byron on February seventh. And ZED is currently hiring paraprofessionals and teachers for the ESY session this summer. That is the ZED update. Uh, let's see, consent agenda. Any questions or discussion on the consent agenda? I'll let Barb know where.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Motion carries. And on to donations. Mr. Treasurer, can you read that?
You ready to, or you need me to go bigger?
Donald's Dorf, a hundred and sixty books. Each kindergarten, each kindergarten gets three chairs for kid and gear, but teaching about your trades. PTO Scholastic, a thousand thirty-five books to give out for the I Love to Read Week. Methodist Church, two hundred dollars for bear packs. Byron Youth Fast Pitch Association, four thousand seven hundred and thirty, sixty-two cents for softball. Alicia, two hundred dollars for BIS enrichment program. Byron Youth Football Association, fifteen hundred for color powder for the intermediate primary school color.
Look for a motion to approve the donations as presented?
Motion to approve, Alicia's.
Can I do that?
Sure.
Someone else, okay.
No. Motion and a second. Roll call vote as that's a resolution.
Yep, um, so Jeremy?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
David?
Who?
David?
Aye.
Alicia?
Aye.
Nadia?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Okay. Do we have any information or miscellaneous items? I didn't have any.
Not this time.
Okay. Would entertain a motion to adjourn, and then we would take a break before our special meeting by just a few minutes, so.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. We are adjourned.